All right, we have the official funds up, so we will go ahead and start the City Commission meeting of October 24th. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Al, roll call.
Benson.
Here.
Johnson.
Present.
Mybaum.
Present.
Schramm.
Here.
Weber, I'm sorry, Villanueva.
Here.
Mayor Moser.
Here.
City Manager Lillen.
Here.
City Attorney Denherter.
Here.
All right. You may notice that the City Commission is a little light tonight with a few commissioners missing, but trust me, for those out there, we do have enough to have a quorum and make decisions tonight. So with that, then, I would ask for a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of October 10th, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion on the minutes? Anybody in the public? All right, all those in favor of approving the minutes of the regular meeting, say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. And anybody abstaining? All right, minutes passed. Number three under routine business is the City Manager's report, so I will turn it over to City Manager Leo.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. Members of the Commission, just a couple things I want to visit with you about. First of all, I'd like to invite you all, since we don't have another meeting before, to attend a bridge dedication and park opening or reopening for Westside Park on November 7th, which is a Monday. Believe comments are going to start at 4:45, but have you gather shortly before. I will send you out an invitation. I just want the media to be aware that that could be a quorum of the City Commission. I'm working with staff at Avera to put that together, as well as Yankton Thrive. So it'll be exciting to dedicate that bridge and have our friends at Avera help us do that. They've said it was going to be warm, sunny, which is enough cold to make it short. So we'll see what happens. So invite you all to attend that. We'll be getting more information here coming forward. Also, Mayor, if I may, I'm going to be texting Chief Linky as we get halfway here through our agenda and try to get him here before the item pertaining to the firehouse software on the agenda. So if he doesn't quite make it there at fire training this evening, to push that back further down the agenda till he gets here. But I'm going to try to give him plenty of notice, just hard to know when and how long things will take with discussion. Also, want to just note publicly that we will have a retirement this week. Commander Todd Brant will be retiring from the Yankton Police Department after, how many years, Chief? Twenty-eight years in our police department. So we'll be having a retirement for him, and certainly if you happen to see him in our community or see him in the next couple days, wish him well. Certainly dedicated, a long time and a lot of hours to keeping our community safe. So we thank him for his service and wish him well in the next phase of his career. Also, want to just, part of this telling our story, we just talked about, talk a little bit about reality, do a little reality check here with you. Many of you saw the great returns of sales tax, and those are great, and we're happy about that. You'll also probably notice yet this agenda and what you're reading from other communities and other entities, governmental entities, that times are changing. For example, we have a bid before you tonight for two pieces of equipment that came in $50,000 more than what we had budgeted. And we also are in a situation where we don't have the piece of, the similar piece of equipment yet that we ordered last December. Part of the reason why your agenda is so long is because we're ordering things that are budgeted in 2023 with the hopes that we're going to get them in 2023. That's different for us and makes me a little bit uncomfortable. The sky's not falling, but I think it's important just to be realistic about this, that things are costing more, coming in over budget. As commissioners, that means for you, you may want to think a little more about, you know, should we be awarding? And our recommendations tonight are to award, but when we, when we look at equipment, when we look at projects, should be, we be awarding things? Are we going to have to reevaluate some projects and priorities when we get into the next year, just because we have it budgeted, especially local street projects? Maybe we can't do four, maybe we can only do two, just based on where things are coming back financially for us. We were really, really lucky or blessed, or I don't know what it was with our health insurance renewal. What if that's not the case? So I think it's important to say that out loud because we don't ever want to extend ourselves beyond what we're capable of paying for. At least, I don't want you to do that. I don't think Al wants you to do that. So, you know, we need to think about that, and we need to, going forward in the new year, realize that we're in a different economy. So enough said, but I just want to bring that to everyone's attention, that we're thinking about that really seriously, and I think you should be too. Happy to stand for questions, Mayor. Otherwise, you have a long agenda, so I'd like you to be able to get to your business.
Are there any questions or comments from the City Commission? All right, seeing none, we move on to public appearance. This is the time for individuals in the Yankton community to appear in front of the City Commission on items not on the agenda tonight. All right, seeing no movement, then we will move on to the consent agenda. Number one is to establish November 14th, 2022 is the date for a public hearing on the request for a special events malt beverage on sale retailers licensed for one day, December 17th, 2022 from the center, Chris Thury, Executive Director, that is located at 900 Whiting Drive. Number two is to establish November 14th, 2022 is the date for a public hearing on the request for a special events malt beverage on sale retailers licensed for one day, December 31st, 2022 from the center, Chris Thury, Executive Director, again at 900 Whiting Drive. And number three is to establish November 14th, 2022 is the date for a public hearing in the consideration of applications for the renewal of alcoholic beverage license for 2023 licensing period. What is your pleasure? So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion on the consent agenda? Anybody in the public? All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. And anybody abstaining? All right, then, moving on to old business. Number one is consideration of memorandum 22-199, second reading and a public hearing to consider ordinance 1066, an extraterritorial zoning jurisdiction rezoning from an ETJA1 agricultural to an ETJB2 highway business. This is at the location of the 500, 1500 block of Whiting Drive, Justice and Michelle Hirschman owners. What is your pleasure? So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion on this? Anybody in the public want to address the commission on this agenda item? Roll call.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Schramm.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye. Motion carries. Moving on to new business, and number one is consideration of memorandum 22-192 and resolution 22-50 regarding a vehicle purchase from the state of South Dakota bid list for the City of Yankton Public Works Department, Street Department, for a half-ton pickup. This would be replacing a 2013 Ford 250 pickup and getting a 2023 Dodge Ram 1500 half-ton in the amount of $40,469 out of Wagner Auto Company of Pierre. What is your pleasure? So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion? Anybody in the public? Roll call.
Schramm.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye. Motion carries. Number two under new business is consideration of memorandum 22-193 regarding a bid award for two steel walking floor trailers for the Department of Public Works, City of Yankton Joint Powers Department. We received one bid on this from Northern Truck and Equipment of Sioux Falls, and that was in the amount of $224,808.50. And as Amy stated earlier, of which only $170,000 was budgeted. So Amy, anything before I ask for the pleasure of the commission you wanted to add here?
Sure. So as I mentioned, this was the item that we, we order two of these every year. These are the trailers that our solid waste goes into and it's hauled to Vermillion Inn. They're called walking floor trailers because they literally have a walking floor that moves the solid waste forward. Those are pieces of equipment that are used really hard and really heavy. So they're used daily, and they're often subject to fire, for example, and, you know, pretty hard use when they're compact, things are compacted in them, et cetera. So we do try to keep them updated and well-maintained. We have not received the ones that you purchased yet last year. We are recommending purchase because we think they're only going to get more expensive and more scarce, and we think that we need to keep things on order and keep up with our fleet. Al thinks that we have enough in capital that we can move that isn't maybe as essential to make up for that cost that was unbudgeted. So in this area, we, we are recommending approval as opposed to, you know, not, not approving or just approving one. We are recommending that we approve all of them or both of them for award and hope that the supply chain loosens up so that they come sooner than we, we think. But I think that right now, we'll be lucky if we get, you know, we'd like to get the ones we ordered last year here before the end of the year, so.
All right. With that understanding, what is the pleasure of the commission?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion? Anybody in the public? Roll call.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Schramm.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye. Motion carries. Number three is consideration of memorandum 22-194 regarding a bid award for crushing salvaged concrete and asphalt. Three bids were received for this. Lowey Construction came in with the lowest bid at $4.89 a ton. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion? Anybody in the public? Roll call.
Benson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Schramm.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye. Motion carries. Number four is consideration of memorandum 22-195 regarding an ABI Force Laser Leveling Ball Field Groomer and Attachments. Before you and your packet tonight is the unit with 11 attachments in the amount of $38,444.60, of which $50,000 was budgeted, and this would aid in the maintenance of nine different fields in the community. What is your pleasure?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion?
I, I'd just be curious to maybe either City Manager, or if Todd would care to rehash for us what the current situation is when it comes to grooming these ball fields and perhaps how this will benefit the work power, the work that's required to happen year over year and the efficiencies that we hope to see with this.
True. So I think how I would describe it now is a lot of, it looks a lot like volunteers coming to help out our, our park staff and a lot of overtime and some volunteer hours by our salary staff, including commissioners sometimes, and the parks director is taking their weekends to try to get the field as level as possible in time for the ball season. We do have draggers and levelers, but, you know, we're eyeballing it more or less when it comes to leveling the field. And our parks department has done a good job, but, you know, as the, one of those things of managing expectations, the expectation is that we're going to be able to level them more precisely, and we need to get that done sooner for our groups and clubs that, that we work with. So this piece of equipment and technology will allow us to do that, not only do a better job at leveling the fields, because it uses, you know, GPS and, and can help us do that through technology, but also is, you know, we can do this more efficiently and quicker for the, the different clubs and associations. So this is also, you know, not, this isn't what I would call a staple piece of equipment for the city. We would get by without it, but it certainly frees up time of personnel where they can be doing the core maintenance of the parks, et cetera, where when ball needs things done, that's when we start needing to mow, and we start needing to get our water turned on in our restrooms and irrigation going. So this will give them a little bit more freedom, I would say, in terms of being able to spend less time doing that and more time doing other things. And Todd, if I'm missing something, you can let me know. But I also bring to the commission's attention, you know, typically, this is something, since it's in the 2023 budget, we wouldn't put before you until, until 2020, 2023. But the Department of Transportation in Minnesota has a specification that we can buy off of here this year in 2022 for what we need. So that makes sense for us under what we budgeted. So we really encourage that we go ahead and do that, and it's available. So that's another big thing. It's something that we've budgeted for that's available. So that's why we're recommending it to you today.
You know, you mentioned expectations. When our families and their players, ball players, go to other communities and see the quality of their municipal fields and bring back to Yankton, and now hopefully we can be a little more competitive with some of the brand-new ones we see in other areas, like the Sioux Fallses and the Brandon's and the Harrisburgs. So this is, in my mind, a good extra that we can purchase to help not only alleviate some time, but make nice facilities.
And when I was in Canton, everyone said, "Well, Yankton has really great fields, and people need to do it like Yankton does it." So, but yeah.
There's always a comparison, right?
I just want to know if it's going to help the fire department or the police department hit more home runs. Who's it helping?
Better.
And I might have to deny that tonight. I'm just teasing. No, my actual question is, I guess I'm curious on this, because in the summer, we have lots of tournaments. Is this something that's used during the week to get the fields ready? So on weekends? Or is this something that, because potentially during the weekend, we have all, like, four parks, all softball fields, baseball fields being used. So is this more of a weekly maintenance tool, and then on the weekends, you're still dragging and, and getting it ready to go? Or how, I'm trying to envision how a unit like this is going to be transported to nine different fields when there's tournaments every weekend?
So this would be used by city staff, not outside groups. We don't let outside groups use our equipment. So this would be Monday through Friday during the week, and then preseason, postseason, any type of, of work we're doing. Right now, we have a three-wheeled unit that we use for dragging the fields, and there's some equipment underneath it and pull behind. This will be the same type of situation. It'll have the equipment that you have under the belly, and then also you pull behind. But what this feature brings in is the laser leveling. So think of now with the three-wheeler that we drag with. The highs stay high and the lows stay low, and we move a little bit of dirt around, and you try, in philosophy, you're trying to fill in the lows, and it just never really happens. Tony and Dan's here, we were out this spring, a number of years ago, when the softball, youth softball association was going to bring in the, they call it a national tournament, it's a regional tournament, but that's the terminology they use. Again, that was going to be in a late July, early August tournament. Our staff doesn't have time. Chad Mattson and Doug Markort got together, and after hours, some of our staff put in time to try to level, again, using not GPS on the actual units, but let's use the transit and marks and pound some stakes, and, and again, back to the eyeballing and your pulling string. And whereas, again, this now, if you think of what they do on roads, gravel roads, or getting roads ready to pave or what have you, it actually has the blade underneath it that has the leveling capabilities based off of your transit set over with the laser eye that's spinning, and, and it'll cut where it needs to cut, and it comes back up where it doesn't have to, spring-loaded. So now you can actually get to that level. So we, city staff, can do that year-round, use this unit. Again, weekends would still be up to the associations when they run their tournaments. But again, since you're not running string, you're not pounding stakes into the ground, doing some of that, the laser leveling can actually happen during the week also. You don't have to wait, again, with the use of our fields, youth softball, youth baseball, adult men's softball, co-ed softball, finding time where you can have a field down to get the whole thing done. It took us a number of, couple of weekends, and we kind of worked in pie-shaped pieces, and, and then a little bit during the week. And so this unit now, you can do a field, again, it's going to take a couple hours, but that's different than staking lots of manpower, lots of bodies, shovels, rakes. And if you don't get done, now what do we do? Because we've got a pie-shaped piece dug out and lowered, and the other three quarters not done. And, and so this machine will give us, yep, we're going to go for two, three hours until it is completely leveled with the laser. So just a lot different than, than what we're capable of right now.
Any other questions from the commission?
I just want to add my extreme appreciation to Todd and the team for, you know, all the work that has gone into the upkeep of the fields in years past, and, and especially appreciative of the time that you put into, into this piece of equipment and the efficiencies that it's going to add. Just out of curiosity, because it's a, it seems like it's a very extensible piece of equipment as well, do you see potential uses for it in other areas of the city? Because it seems like it can do quite a few different things, even with grass and perhaps other areas of the parks.
Yeah. So this, again, is a piece of equipment that they label it a ball field leveler. But again, if you're doing park remodel projects where you're digging down hills or adding dirt or making berms or doing some of those type of things, this, this can push, pull. It's got the blade underneath, so you can level park ground, you can, roads, if we had gravel roads that we wanted to, if we have washouts in them or what have you in our parks, if we've got some gravel, think of, again, between the two north fields at Sartoma Park where we have the gravel. So yes, playground areas, when we got to get in, in and level that before they come in and, and put down cement, like we're doing at Westside Park. It's a small enough unit, can get in there and do that for us with the laser versus, again, right now, we're out there with that transit and that skid loader. And again, we have guys that are very good at working skid loaders, but just getting stuff perfectly leveled, trying to do that way is, is very time-consuming and very hard to do. So yes, this will be able to utilize, we'd be able to utilize this in our park system doing other projects, yes.
Other questions or comments from the commission? Anybody in the public want to address the commission on this? Yes, if you would step to the mic and give us your name, and then state what you'd like to share.
Dan Delforge with Sartoma Youth Baseball and Friends of Sartoma Park. I was a volunteer for those weekends, and highly recommend the purchase of this piece of equipment. But I look at it for, for us as a playability. When we say level the fields, we're actually putting a grade on the fields. So it's level in, in the aspect that it's a smooth surface, which we don't have today. But the grade, what it allows to do, it's not going to necessarily help with drainage, but it will help shed moisture. So if we do get a reasonable amount of rain, we can still play games. In our tournament last year, so we host, Sartoma Baseball hosts a, a weekend tournament over Mother's Day, and then YBA hosts another one in the end of June. We had a, about three-quarters of an inch of rain Saturday night into Sunday morning, when we have a full slate of games. So we were, we got one of the fourplex fields ready by 10:00 a.m. At noon, two of the fields still had standing water on them. So we had to play a full slate of tournament games on the two turf fields, and on the four fields on the fourplex, we played a total of three games on Sunday. So at 7:00 a.m., we had to reconfigure our entire tournament bracket, as we had teams traveling from Watertown, trying to think, Madison, who are already on the road. So we're contacting coaches as they're driving, telling them new game times. Not the most enviable place to be when they're supposed to play at a certain time, and now they're not. Or you're going to tell them you're going to play till 6:00 p.m., when they're expecting to be home at 4:00 o'clock on a school night for our Mother's Day tournament. So it will greatly help our ability to host tournaments, especially when you consider the other areas. Now Aberdeen has a new facility, Mitchell, and there is a wiffleball field in Webster as well that just got built. You know, it allows us, when people come down, to still enjoy the fields at Yankton. I know everybody enjoys the turf fields, but to be able to utilize the fourplex, that's four fields. That's a lot of games, that's a lot of teams that we need to bring in to fill our tournaments. So it eases the burden on the city staff, it makes our tournaments a lot more feasible. I think it would be a great addition, however else you use it. Good luck, as long as it starts at the fourplex.
Thank you. Anybody else in the public? Roll call.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Schramm.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye. Motion carries, and I hear you. I'm married to the president of the softball association. I have lived around somebody grumbling because they can't play games, so I get it. All right. So number five is consideration of memorandum 22-200 and resolution 22-53 regarding a conditional use permit for a self-storage facility. This is at the 1500 block of Whiting Drive, Justice and Michelle Hirschman owners. What is your pleasure?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion on this? Anybody in the public? One, two, three, four, five. We have five. All right.
Isn't a member of the public who wants to talk about what might be going on at this location? Okay.
I'll take the bait.
Scotty Berman, KYNT News. And since I drive down Whiting Drive all the time, what's going on here?
I don't know what's going on.
This is for self-storage units. I see Mr. Mingle coming up to the mic, so maybe he's got further clarification.
So it, it's for phased development of multiple self-storage units in that area, and the prerequisite rezoning that you just acted on under old business also rezones the area to B2 highway business. So there could be some mixed-use development in the area with self-storage and, and some commercial. It's in our ETJ, it's not in our corporate limits. We've had discussions with Mr. Hirschman, who's here, about stormwater management and things like that that are sensitive, that, and, and state law kind of covers us from that respect, as far as, you know, you can't flow more stormwater off the site than is historically. Leaving the site now, if it was in the city, there'd be a fair amount of additional review as far as building permit issuance and things are concerned. But Planning Commission recommended approval, staff recommends approval.
Dave, the reason we have to use a conditional use permit is because B2 highway does not allow for self-storage units as a, as a permitted type of use.
As a permitted principal use, self-storage is, is a conditional use. Sorry, not a permitted principal use. Highway business districts don't allow for warehousing, and the purpose that conditional use permit is, is considered for self-storage is, it's kind of getting close to what warehousing could be considered, but warehousing is typically associated with one major manufacturer or something like that, some bulk storage area, as opposed to people and their people and their personal effects, which is deemed appropriate under certain conditions in a B2 highway business zone.
I believe the commission packet did say too, there was nobody speaking out against it in the area, correct?
That's correct. The Planning Commission had a full hearing on this as required by ordinance, and there were no, nobody, there was nobody in the audience that opposed. We didn't receive any information subsequent to mailing of any opposition either.
Any other questions from the commission or the public? Roll call.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Schramm.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye. Motion carries. Number six under new business is consideration of memorandum 22-198 regarding the vehicle purchase from the state of South Dakota bid list for the city of Yankton Chan Gurnee Municipal Airport for a Ford Explorer. This would be to replace a 2015 Ford pickup, which would head its way over to community development. And then the purchase for a 2023 Ford Explorer from Lam Motors in Oneida in the amount of $34,869, of which $35,000 was budgeted. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion? Anybody in the public? Roll call.
Schramm.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye. Motion carries. Number seven is consideration of memorandum 22-202 and resolution 22-54 recommending that November 14, 2022, be established as the date for a public hearing on a special assessment for Dakota Street from 12th to 15th Street. What is your pleasure?
Introduced.
Do we, since this is a memorandum, do we need a motion or can we just introduce it? It doesn't have, introducing is fine. Okay, just wanted to double check. All right. Number eight then is consideration of memorandum 22-196 and resolution 22-51 regarding a gun purchase. This is to replace and trade one Glock for another Glock in the amount of $476 with a $250 trade value. Would put it at 226 as a final payment, and this would come out of the weapons capital account. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion?
What's important about this transaction being on the city commission agenda? It's a trade-in of gun, a couple hundred bucks. Why is it important that the city commission has to review this transaction?
Well, you probably wouldn't have to, but it's within the capital budget, but it isn't something we necessarily plan to do. What we're doing here is purchasing a new weapon, because when we have retirements in our department, oftentimes the department, the individual likes to purchase their previous, their service weapon. And so, you know, we hadn't planned to purchase this in the regular scheduled weapons replacement cycle. So technically, could we have gone ahead and bought it because there's weapons funds in your capital? Yes. However, in effort of complete transparency, this is not a purchase we intended to make, so.
Any other commission discussion? Anybody in the public? Roll call.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Schramm.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye. Motion carries. Number nine is consideration of memorandum 22-197 regarding a taser purchase. This is for five tasers in the amount of $7,056.60 after trade-in of the five non-working units. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion?
So upon retirement, do officers get the option of purchasing tasers on their payout as well?
No, but.
Oh, okay. Just curious.
They'd probably like to, but no, that's not, that's not an option.
All right. Any other commission discussion? Anybody in the audience? Roll call.
Benson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Schramm.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye. Motion carries. Number 10 is consideration of memorandum 22-203 establishing a base salary adjustment at 6% and a one-step plan for all eligible employees of the city of Yankton, South Dakota, effective January 1, 2023. You will see three resolutions in front of you tonight, resolution 22-55 regarding the AF, AFSCME eligible employees, resolution 22-56, which is regarding the FOP eligible employees, and resolution 22-57 regarding all non-union eligible employees. And before I turn this over to City Manager Leon, and she'll walk us through what all of that means for all of those resolutions, unless the commission wants to adjust anything tonight, when you go to make a motion, you can put it all in one motion, even though there's three resolutions. So as you listen to her walk through this, if you decide to change anything, realize then we would have to take it one resolution at a time. So with that, I'll turn it over to City Manager Leon to walk us through this.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the commission and public. So these resolutions do apply to all of our employees, all of your, all of the employees, with the exception of your employees. This does not apply to Al, does not apply to myself, does not apply to Ross. However, the remaining employees, full-time employees are eligible if this should be approved by you this evening. So our pay scale is 20 steps. So when we talk about steps in the scale, we are saying, you know, one step is for all AFSCME and non-union eligible employees approximately 1.26%. That's different in the police department. Police department steps are equivalent, almost as equivalent to two steps. So if you're approving this tonight, you're approving 6% plus 1.26% for AFSCME and non-union eligible folks, so 7.26%, as well as then the 6% and two steps, so over 8% there for FOP eligible employees. Now, when we talk about eligible employees for the step, we have some employees who've been with us long enough that they're at the top of their pay grade. So at step 20, they're eligible for anything cost of living, but if they stay in that same paying grade, meaning that same occupation, unless that grade is changed, they're capped at the top of that scale. So this is the largest increase that I've seen before the commission, since I've been here, for the cost of living adjustment. And as you all know, inflation is, I guess that rate varies depending upon who you ask, but that's definitely impacting us when it comes to our human capital and what our labor expenses are. I think this commission has been intentional about not losing ground and staying competitive. I don't think we would have a full docket, a full-time staff if we weren't doing that. You know, I went to a fast food restaurant a few months ago and their hours had been adjusted because of lack of labor. That's fine when it's a fast food restaurant. I don't really need fast food. I just, you know, don't have to have it. But we don't have the option. We can't not run police, we can't not run dispatch. When snow falls, we got to be there when we need water and so, we have to be, we have to have people. So I would tell you that this is the most important investment that you'll make with public dollars, and I'm happy to answer questions, but I would concur with the human resources manager's recommendation to approve.
I'll move that we approve.
I'll second. Second. We have a motion and a second to approve as presented in front of you. Any other commission discussion? Anybody in the public? Roll call.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Schramm.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye. Motion carries.
I just can't believe we didn't have the chief come up and talk about it, because, you know.
His surplus property? I thought he was here for the next item, which we'll get on to, is consideration of memorandum 22-201 regarding the purchase of a fire reporting software for the fire department. This would be coming before you at the rate of $9,500 a year, of which $12,500 was budgeted. With that, I would ask Chief Linky to come to the podium, walk us through what this is for, what's needed, and why this helps our community. If you could walk us through that first before I ask for a motion.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. So the existing software that we use for reporting is called Firehouse Software, and it is sunsetting. So it will cease to exist at the end of the year. So this gives us an opportunity to look at some other items. We are required to report to the National Fire Incident Reporting System, which you may hear called NEFFERS. But then we also have several different weather software systems or homegrown spreadsheets and things like that that are, that we need to consolidate. And so putting this all into one, into one piece will help us to better manage our inventory, which we have a lot of stuff and where all that stuff is located and replacement schedules and those types of things are pretty important. The First Do Software Suite also has a couple of features that I really like. One of them is an integration into our computer-aided dispatch system, so that at some point in time, we can use that technology to actually push out pre-plans of buildings and target hazards in our city prior to us even going to the incident. So that's, that's pretty helpful for us. And as well, the ISO training feature, which we are an ISO Class 3, which I think I put in your memorandum, that lowers your insurance premiums. So being able to actually parse those ISO training reports could be a distinct advantage to us when we go for our next rating, which will be in 2023. Any other questions?
Since we're talking about ratings, is it feasible for us to move up to a better rating, or are we kind of where we're at?
We potentially could move up to a better rating. The software system will help to manage that, but it's not the end-all, be-all. We need some, some training documentation and training center to help push us into a 2, which would be great. But we're a firm 3 right now, which is pretty good. And that's not just the fire department, that's also the water department and the dispatch. They provide a ton of that advantage to us as well.
The current software that's sunsetting, was that a one-time purchase-type model versus a continual monthly expense?
No, that was an annual expense as well.
Annual expense, okay.
Yes.
And what, what was that, if you know?
I don't, I'd be lying if I told you for sure.
You haven't memorized all that?
I did not memorize that number, I'm sorry.
Is this software that you have any experience with?
I do not have any experience with this software in particular. I do, I do have a few connections with the company that have been pretty helpful with determining whether this would be a good software to use or not. Firehouse, I used the software that we're getting rid of or that's going away, I used about 20 years ago, and it's most certainly past its time. As an example, I'm doing an external stakeholder, internal stakeholder strategic planning, and the Firehouse software doesn't export CSV files. So when you're trying to generate a report or a citizen asks you for some data or something like that, you have to do it manually. So I spent about seven hours last week trying to answer one question. So something like this will hopefully have, well, I shouldn't say hopefully, this also will have dashboards and user-defined dashboards. It will be able to have an outward-facing piece for the public as well.
Any other questions for the chief on the software? With that then, I would ask for what's your pleasure on this motion?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other commission discussion? Anybody in the public want to address the commission on this agenda item? Roll call.
Schramm.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Abstain, member of the fire department.
Benson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye. And with one abstention, that motion does pass. Number 13 is consideration of memorandum 22-204 regarding a fireworks public display. This is tied to our Holiday Festival of Lights tree lighting ceremony and will take place on the top level of the Meridian Bridge. What is your pleasure?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion?
So if the fireworks were not to happen on the top level of the Meridian Bridge, but staff still wanted fireworks, where would they, where would they happen, if at all?
Well, I don't know, because we had previously done them across the river, and that property owner was generous and allowed us to do that. There was a couple incidents where there was maybe some, well, not maybe, there was some debris fireworks refuse left over and some of his field got, I don't want to say damaged, but torn up. And so we weren't offered that opportunity anymore, so that's when we started doing them on the bridge. We would probably be able to find somewhere, perhaps down by maybe Paddle Row Point.
Grass and field would be a concern.
Right. Well, that's a concern even on the bridge. You know, I mean, with it as dry as it is, even now, if the chief were to say, it's too dry, but yeah, Paddle Row Point or, you know, some communities do them at fairgrounds, that's not really something that we have the opportunity to do. But we could probably find a place, I just hadn't given that much thought. The fire hazard would be the main danger now. And depending upon the time of year, you know, we typically don't, in Yankton, do New Year's Eve fireworks, but, you know, depending upon the time of year, it could make a difference as to where we could do it as well.
So I guess something to think about, just because when we have Riverboat Days, when we have Fourth of July, when we have an event like this, and then we effectively shut down one of our signature properties where, you know, we're bringing people to town especially, that we don't let them walk across the bridge, that that should be kind of like a signature part of any of those visitors coming, for instance. So for this, something local, probably not as big of a deal, but I, you know, especially with the anniversary of the bridge coming up here in, actually, two years this month, two years from this month, where we're going to shoot fireworks if we do fireworks this time of year in two years. So anyway, again, just something to think about. If you get a couple thousand people who come down for the tree lighting, that'd be great, but especially if it's 100,000 people coming over Riverboat Days, that's something that I heard. This year wasn't the exception either, but when we shut down the bridge, this signature part of our community, maybe it'd be, maybe be something to think about in the future, that we have fireworks launching from a different location than the bridge. Because I assume we can't even, even if we're launching fireworks from the top level, there'd probably be some feedback that we still wouldn't leave the bottom level open. Is that right?
Yeah. Would we leave the bottom open, Todd? No. I thought you were shaking your head yes. Yeah, I was going to say, I didn't think so. No, we don't leave the bottom open.
Any other?
Todd, is that what happened to your hair?
Todd, this is our first year without Brittany. Is the event going to look very similar to past years, or are you planning any changes this year?
No changes.
All right. Any other commission discussion? Anybody in the public? Yes?
Just a couple of questions.
If you could state your name and then go ahead and ask.
Okay, Mark Conrad. Yeah, the shutting down on the bridge, I was wondering too, couldn't you just shut it down an hour before the fireworks starts and people could still go across and then shut it down? And that way, people could enjoy it during the day while it's And that way people could enjoy it during the day while it's still light out?
Yeah, I'm not sure the exact timing of the fireworks, but we're shutting it down, I think, at 5:00, is that correct, Todd?
The upper bridge gets shut down, depending on the size of the displays, like Fourth of July, they'll come in and set up starting at 10:00 a.m. in the morning. So it'll be shut down, the upper level will be shut down effectively the entire day. The lower level bridge of the bridge gets shut down an hour before the fireworks end and then gets reopened after they are done.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's fine. Because my kids and I like to walk across, and the lower level's good enough. We know that the upper level's busy, so. And then the Riverboat Day, I was a little surprised that Riverboat Days had the fireworks across the water, because we were all posed and ready to look at the bridge, and then all of a sudden it starts happening over here. I remember the first year it happened on the bridge, we were all watching Nebraska, and then, oh, they're way over there. And then we had to walk all the way across to go find a place, and it was already taken. So just wondering why Riverboat Days had theirs across the water instead of on the bridge. So, thank you.
I don't know the answer to that. I can get an answer. We have some connections to the Riverboat Days, folks, I just, I don't have an answer this evening.
Anybody else in the public? And yes, I do see in the commission packet, it says the lower level will close at 5:00 p.m. The night of the festival, which is December 1st, by the way. So hopefully everybody's planning to come out and watch a parade and light a tree and see some fireworks. It's a nice program. With that, and seeing no other movement, then I would ask for roll call.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Schramm.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye. Motion carries. And last, under new business, is consideration of memorandum 22-205 regarding an FAA airport grant pre-application for 2023. This is for the North Taxi Lines Access Road and Runway 20 Turnaround Project. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion? Anybody in the public? Roll call.
Benson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Schramm.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye. Motion carries. We have no other business in front of the city commission tonight, so with that, I would ask for a motion to adjourn into executive session to discuss contractual litigation and personnel matters under SDCL 1-25-2.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.